Twenty-two at six o'clock PM. Um, may I have, are there any revisions to the agenda? May I have a motion to approve the agenda? Okay, all in favor? If they are. All right, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Furman.
Evening, Board. And, uh, Chair, uh, the two items for our agenda this evening. Our first agenda item is our book study. Uh, so we were reading chapter two. So, um, what I thought we could do for this one is, um, McAdams shares that, um, the simplified version is graphic of a reform governance framework. They say the boards must be clear about their core beliefs and commitments and have a clear theory of action for change that drives redesign of their districts through the enactment of oversight, fine reform policies. Further points out that the division between governance and management is crucial in a well-run school district. So he goes through this chapter and just gives a really high-level overview of all these different components of reform governance model. And so my question to the board that I thought we could discuss is, as you read through this, did any of the components resonate with you? And if so, why?
What struck me clearly was, I mean, obviously, he is talking about, or they're effective from a reform. But that, I view that as critically necessary, even if that's not the index that the board is taking, right? So I, I view that as, um, something that we very much need to do.
Some things stood out to me. Policies, but the policies add how, to what, the more the board ties the hands of management with numerous. That stood out to me, um, under the, um, in the section on policies to transform urban districts. Um, board members must read widely in reform literature, become knowledgeable about what is working and not working in other districts. And so I was kind of going, where would I find this reform literature? Um, and then I thought about in terms of what's working and not working. I think the G S B A conference. But, you know, I'd like to learn more about, you know, the resources out there.
Along with that, I was, um, I know G S B A is now forming a partnership in the new coalition for urban school districts. So, uh, I'm hopeful that that is another source.
And Doug here. Two things. I think about P E. Thank you for making that overwhelming data. And so. Forward, Seth. I had a conversation with the board about, like, that's good. How it works. The U of Chicago, overwhelming that, the Ben Probst. Done. Other was the bottom of page twenty. Unlike true, is that we are all. Yeah. Board members. Change. About sort of like trust community, what we do. Something was interested. Have to read. Okay, well, before I'm over. Have a. I've had a hundred times where I've had. Questions with it. Board. I trust you. I love Jane. I used to work with her at Ripro. Paul Carmen, she seems fantastic. I'm like, that's three there. Unless you think that Khan and Tasha are evil, I mean, this is an actual conversation that's bad. Unless you think that they are both evil and are overwhelming the three of us. Well, it's missing. Yeah. Trust you.
Yeah, the whole section is. How, uh. I see the usual. Community leaders. Something that they pointed out that it takes about ten years. So, because I think there's just feeling that one. You know, five years, six months, or, you know, and then when that, when we don't see that, then there's, what are you guys doing? What are you guys doing? And so, um, and even for us as a board, I think that we, like, but that's just how it works, you know? And so I think that sometimes being that written down and knowing that that is just what happens, not just what happens in the board, but everywhere, that change takes time. It's really more about continuing to just follow the plan, no matter who's in charge or who's in charge. That that systematic change happens. So that was, yeah, that was my walk away. And that being, you know, you're not going to always be satisfied after that one meeting or that one year. Hope that you're making the right, right, you know, the right direction.
The, the second one we talked, the se- the section where we should talk about benchmarking and performance data, um, I, I think, I'm pleased to hear about that coalition of urban schools, because I think our benchmark shouldn't be just a soldier. We should really be looking at how to be the best U T school district. Um, but it did bring up for me data validity and independence, right? So I know that there's a puzzle to consider it on that spin for the board and, and for us to take a look at at norm level, um, and at a governance level, how, uh, how we use data. Um, and, and again, this isn't your administration. I am just speaking. Previous. Make sure that we are able to, um, have the highest level of confidence in all data. How we, uh, how we do.
The, uh, the section on, the building block for school reform governance, I don't know, talks about, um, different types of meetings of past board, national board meetings, the board's. And then, as Dana was talking about, and this kind of resonated with me too, about relearning and the board kind of being able to nurture and holding your knowledge base. It's also workshops. That's really like our work session is, you know, having the opportunity, this is the discussion forum for the board to say, hey, we're learning, we're talking, we're going to muddle through. And perspectives from each board member and come to a common understanding. It's important that we really heard what are the topics we want to put on the agenda for work sessions, um, what resources do you want to look at as we talk through, like, what would be on there, what's the perspective, um, and making sure that I, the superintendent, have a clear, really clear understanding from each board member on what data do you want to do? Resources, do you want me to pull for you so that I can bring that? But, you know, really going to talking about the board meeting is when the board takes action. Public really sees the board, um, so that thinking about kind of the ceremony and the the structure of the board meeting is. Also, like, the policy development section. So these outlines there that about ninety percent of the policies are routine operating policies. Um, like, it's the day-to-day, how do you, you know, make, you would want to make sure we don't have negative balances in our accounts. We want to make sure that employees get their paychecks. So we kind of. Then leaning into those reform policies. So as we move forward with our report, with our, um, policy updates, the board really thinking of those ten percent of our policies that are going to be reform policies, which could be criteria. He hears, you know, how we adopt textbook curriculum. So those kind of reform policies, I think, are really key for us to take our time with, think through critically, and make sure that we are holding up our, um, commitment. Rebuilding.
I was reading that I was assuming or hoping that G S B A would play a role in helping us with this.
Yeah.
Else and not take responsibility. But, you know, it can get really, just get stuck in there. Um, and so I think this is the. There are orders, and then also letting us leave. But our orders.
I think that I think is important here, and then there's a whole chapter on later in transition. Um, it's almost like building your, your minor league or board. I think starting to hear the board thoughts on how do we start strategic, our S L T, our minor league of board, people that's interested in. So, um, kind of thoughts on how we can engage our. More in the process of decision-making and the S L T part of that. Um, so any thoughts or, or Courtney and I are going to take a look at that this summer and really try to figure out how do we start plugging in those leadership teams. Invite us with information to be a communication conduit between districts and schools and their communities. They are, you know, almost like mini school boards for their boards at their school level. As. Boards.
I mean, they, they put, the minutes are all on. Have to upload the minutes. Our perspective on us, attending Mary. Your individual leader. Or engagement and hearing kind of the.
I here would let them know that, you know, where am I. Feeling the pulse on it, they would. Um, the other thing I'm wondering is, when we do our spotlights for next year, try to keep our spotlight short, but wondering if. We're about having S L T, S L T number, like, share, you know, from what's going, you know, what are some things that are coming up at that school when they do that spotlight? So if it's Orange Row Spotlight, or sorry, Beacon Hill Spotlight, then the S L T number would come and share as a.
What I, what I'd be interested in in that case as well is, is not just everything that's going well, but I'd be interested in what do you need? Like, what are, what are some of the things specifically, you know, and as long as we can figure out a process to do that, whether our, I think that, that giving them the forum, giving people the form to make that.
Yep, for the book. So we don't have a work session in June, but we do have. By, um, so if we chat.
Public is saying they're hearing you all.
Just the book study.
There you go.
Thank you. Okay, uh, just wanted to give the board an update on where we are with the grading process. Wanted to just quickly review that we have, um, our cycle of implementation and walk through just really quickly. I've talked about this a couple of times already. Um, so the phases we've been going through is, um, first phase was researching, identifying our why, what are our best practices, what are some options? Once we've identified those, we move into the design phase, where once we've got a preferred solution, designing a model for deployment, um, investing, making sure that we have allocated appropriate resources and have staff training in place. Implementation is when we put all those plans into action and complete, which really isn't complete, but it's that stage where we collect and monitor, which could then, if you keep going through the cycle, then you move into more research. Um, just a quick overview. Very clear, um, for next year, when it comes to grading scales, there are no changes on the grading scales. K five will continue to use their four-point scale and six twelve will continue to use the seven-point scale. So no changing with the grading scales. Um, and that really, the next phase for us is, as we've been teasing through the designing of these components, is that we realize there are pockets where things are happening in line, things are rocking and rolling, everything's aligned, everything's working the way it should, and there are pockets where it's not as aligned as it should be. Um, so really what we want to do next year is now that we. Alignment between our instructional and assessment practices and then communicating those, um, assessment results to our families. So I don't know if you were aware, but back in two thousand and nineteen, um, there was an administrative regulation that was adopted and it'll pull up here. It outlines many of the grading practices that came out of the Equity and Grading Task Force. Um, so this has been in place since two thousand and nineteen on our website for people to review, um, and it just identifies some overarching, you know, fundamentals. And then it really digs into, um, uh, information about accountability, just some overall expectations for staff. It aligns them to the teacher evaluation and leader evaluation system. Um, where, really where we see the close alignment to what came out of the grading task force was the student achievement monitoring and communication. So some of the recommendations that came from there were like one, at least one assessment a week. That's been in our A R for three years. Um, so we need to just make sure that the things that we said we're going to do, that we're doing, if they're not happening, working with the teachers that maybe need some support and training to make sure that they're. Level we're asking them to do. Um, and just the date, that was out for public review back in February two thousand and nineteen, and it was approved for implementation the following month.
If I, if I may, if we, so we're, we're saying that we've, we've had actually some of the stuff in place since two thousand and seventeen, but it's a matter of, in some cases, compliance. Is there a way to quantify or track or have some sort of dashboard so we can watch our continued growth towards compliance?
That is great, and that's one of the reasons we're transitioning to Infinite Campus for the grade book, because then in fact was very hard for us to monitor those, um, grades being entered, they entered in on a weekly, principals don't have access to pull those reports. Um, so the Infinite Campus will give us that tool.
Great.
That's one of the reasons we needed some way to monitor and just make, have that double check.
Yep.
Trust what we have to monitor, um, inspect what we expect. Uh, so just a review of research phase is we really leaned in to identify our why. Um, so coming up with common agreements about grading and grading practices is that grades must be meaning. Add information for students that they can self-evaluate and push themselves for growth. Um, and that grades should encourage students to lean in and try to continually push themselves to the next level. Um, grades should be easily understood by parents and students and easily accessible. So that's part of this moving to a new grading tool, which will be a, a learning curve for our staff. It's going to be a new tool, a new way to integrate. But I think it's smart to really lean in and let's use this year to monitor for, that we are doing a really good job with what we have before we make any changes to those processes. In the design phase, we are in the midst of building a master's practices and manu- uh, procedures manual, um, that we will have ready to disperse for the beginning of the school year that will really digs in and talks about, okay, when we say we're not doing effort grades, they're not going to show up on the report card, but we still do want to communicate to parents how students are doing in class when it comes to putting forth effort, when it comes to meeting potential. Um, does it need to be communicated on the report card? We don't believe so, but we still do want to communicate that with parents. Um, we've got to tease through, we're, we said we're not going to put zeros in the grade book. Um, so how, what does that look like? So using something, um, a holding place called an N C I, which has been not turned in, so that it pulls up a trigger and you can say, how many assignments has a student not turned in? And at the end of the semester or on summatives, you can say, well, I don't have enough information to grade mastery. So you can get issue incompletes or identify opportunities for students to come in and do some of that extra work, so you can assess the final grade. Um, other thing we've really got to tease out is the group work and how that's been, um, how we're going to use, if that is something, well, sorry, group work not to be used for summatives, but then how do we use group work? We know students need to collaborate and do work together. How do we then take that group work and how do we assess it if we are wanting to use that as part of a, a final grade? Um, the extra credit, um, eliminating that, and I know a lot of people don't do extra credit already. I think that's a pretty much a standard here in Decatur, but we still want parents to know that you're, there still will be reteaching and reassessing. That just because there's no extra credit doesn't mean that the teachers aren't going to give the student another opportunity to master that content. The, a clarification that we want to make sure we're communicating, and this is, you know, a big part of moving forward with culturally relevant education in city schools in Decatur, is we are, we refer to our curriculum as G S E plus, the Georgia Standards of Excellence Plus, because what that does is it brings in not just our Georgia Standards of Excellence, but our I B, our A T courses, they have a whole set of their own standards. So we know we're going to start with the Georgia Standards of Excellence, but there are other nationally and world, um, world, uh, recognized standards that we may want to use instead of Georgia standards. Um, but it's also simultaneously identifying how can we as a school make sure that we've looked at the standard, knowing if the standard comes from a certain perspective, that we lift up other perspectives in an equal way, so that our students are really seeing multiple perspectives. We're not elevating one voice or one perspective. So this is how we are really working in to decolonize the curriculum, is that G S E plus.
And presumably we'll have methodologies to continuously review that and provide feedback and because we're not going to, it's probably unrealistic to assume we're going to get it all right out of the gate.
Correct, exactly. And that is part of the big project that Dr. Beam and Dr. Helfton have been working on over the past couple of months, is how do we make sure that we are embedding culturally relevant education experiences for our students through our district improvement plan, part of which are making sure that we have aligned our standards using our G S E plus.
And wh- when will we, for some of the things that we're still working on, on this, when, when, just you want to tell the folks when we expect to have the answers to some of them? Like, so for example, the group work, not as a summative grade.
But the first slide, when we come back in the fall. Yes, we will have the provisions and procedures handbook one hundred percent ready to go when they come back in the fall, um, probably earlier than that, probably mid-July.
I don't know if this is on the next slide or not, but we are also doing a way with, uh, pluses and minuses in terms of grading.
Correct. We currently don't use those pluses or minuses that I was aware of.
Okay.
So it's six, they grade on a one to eight scale in M Y P and a one to four scale, K five, and a one to seven. But yeah, no, we don't use pluses and minuses.
And exactly how much, how much. Some parents, they've heard that the teachers know everything and then some parents have heard. One question, second, my follow-up to that is, I think that for some of these policies, how they translate into grading would have to be put into a syllabus.
Mm-hmm.
And so that the students know very clearly what the expectations are going into, if this is to be implemented into the fall, if there's no extra credit, your grade is what it is. Um, the teachers would have to know how to work that into a syllabus so that the students start at the year.
Exactly. And actually, we did update, so, um, two things. I'll talk a little bit about the, and when we get into investment, which is when we're going to talk about professional learning at the staff level, to make sure that every single staff member has the exact information they need. So that's, I'll share that in just a minute. Um, but a syllabus, that is, we've updated our teacher job description, and that is one of the requirements in the job description that says each teacher will provide a syllabus. And we've listed core elements in their syllabus about grading practices, about how the final grades arrive, what their content is, um, those kind of things. That, so you, everyone should get a syllabus for every course.
Effort grade defined and communicated to the teachers? My question, I'm a P E coach or course or, there's lots of ways in which effort are very much part of the curriculum. Um, just maybe in class conversations, is that part of what effort means? When I looked at that list, that's the one thing that I would.
Okay.
As a staff member, I would be, I mean, how do I implement that? What can I?
So focusing on the I B on our profile as our way to really come up with concrete examples of how are we grading the other than what you do academically, that other piece, which could include effort. Um, so we are fleshing some of that out as well through this, through the design phase. Um, some of the other things that we're still working on, um, is making sure we've scheduled our vertical alignment meetings, working on creating and coming to those common assessments that embed our G S B A plus, um, making sure that as our teachers are looking at their grades, and a lot of this, like I said, is already happening, as I've been talking with teachers more so individually as well, um, that their, their grades are already doing the G S, like, already including the standards. And just making sure that it is clearly aligned for the parents so that there's communication is clear. Um, so making sure any kind of murky waters when it comes to assessment and mastery have been cleared out for our parents and for our students. Um, and then, as I said, we're transitioning to Infinite Campus as our main grade reporting tool, um, making sure that transparency is there. Again, as I said, just making sure that if you say a child is getting a six, we know exactly why they've earned a six. We know what the six, level six mastery looks like, um, sounds like, feels like, so that the student can clear out, here's why I got a six, mom, here's why I got a six, because I did this, this, and this, I need to do this, this, and this to get a seven, so that they can clearly articulate that. Um, and then continuing to do formative assessments. Uh, we do do formative assessments, they, um, across the district, but they're not being uniformly captured in a coherent way for teachers in, in all areas. Like I said, this is about making sure we have consistent, universally applied practices across the district, um, to making sure that we do have those and we can monitor those, um, grades being issued on formative assessments in our, um, Infinite Campus grade.
How, how do we respond to the concern, and I think it's a legitimate concern that parents have raised around, you know, in, in removing extra credit and in removing group summative and, and doing things like that, we are, in some cases, removing a way for kids to, um, improve their grade, right? Or, or we've removed some of the data points and evaluation of the grade. And so, uh, without even talking about a one to four scale, this is just even within the existing. There's going to be a complex transition time for this. How do we ensure we aren't harming the kids by removing some of those opportunities for them to improve their grade or improve their scores or improve their performance when we, we know that there's going to be a couple of hiccups on the, in the roll?
This is not going to be, any kind of implementation plan like this and rollout is not going to be the, the smoothest, you know, flattest runway. We are going to hit a couple bumps, maybe a couple potholes, but it shouldn't be nothing that is detrimental to the student. We are going to hit a couple bumps, maybe a couple potholes, but it shouldn't be nothing that is detrimental to the student, particularly when it comes to extra credit. Who gets extra credit? Who doesn't get extra credit? So by saying, you're really leaning in and making sure that when we communicate the level of mastery on the standard, the student has that clear understanding of here's why I got that grade. And I know as the teacher, you should be progressing through your achievement understanding up through, you know, a level of excellence, which is where we want our students to get. Well, what's holding your students back from getting that? You know, I'm going to talk with Tasha, let's say, and say, hey, Tasha, you know, you got a four on this assessment. I know you can do better. You know, I know that as your teacher and what I've seen and what I've seen your potential, I know you can do better. Let's talk about reteaching, let's set some goals for your achievement. Let's say, hey, let's, as a class, set a goal for our class. We all want to get an average of whatever on this assessment. How can we work towards that goal together? So it's shifting the conversation from a few students getting extra opportunities for extra credit to every student working towards their own level of mastery and success.
Yeah, I do, I very much understand the why, right? I get, I sort of buy into what we're trying to do there, but just to assuage parents that we're going to be highly engaged during the rollout so that when hiccups do occur, that there is a way to escalate and elevate and so that we aren't accidentally damaging your kids' opportunities, you know, due to our own rollout as opposed to their.
Got it, okay.
And that's what I think needs to be clear to the, like, what that process will be as a part of this.
Because I'm having a hard time putting context to.
Yeah, so I mean, so if, if before, you know, if before the, the standards were, for some reason, not particularly clear to the student, but they had the opportunities through extra credit or effort grades or other things to pick back up any performance slack, the other, other ways that we're going to be tracking. Even the rollout of this, we've taken those opportunities away, but it is still unclear to that child because we are in the middle of doing a new process that are going to have hiccups. How do we ensure that that child's grades aren't damaged coming out of that and not have the opportunities to recover their grades in the course of that year?
That's a good question, and I, my response to that is because we are transitioning to a new grade book tool, the student will have easier access to view their progress ongoing. So they'll have really clear understanding of, look, I can get to my grade book every single day. I can understand this, and they can get through managed back if they're in six, 12. But other students don't necessarily have access to that. But aligning the standards of how it, how the grade book will show their prog, their progress over time will help the student see that more clearly.
I think teacher feedback is critical, quick future feedback. And, you know, the opportunity for reteaching and reassessment. And so, you know, I know that, I'll just give a shout out to Ms. Jacobs at Renfro. Kristin Jacobs, with my son, Kahari, had her in seventh grade. I mean, I don't know how she did it, but she gave the quickest feedback, and so Kahari was anxious to see what she said so that he knew how to, you know, make corrections from there. And so, and when we, you know, sadly, like some classes, but when we give back assessments with just the grade and not that feedback, then they don't know where they're deficient in those standards. And so, you know, I think that that, that's going to be critical. You know, if, if, you know, meeting with the students, which I know a lot of teachers do now, but being consistent with that practice of meeting and, and giving written and verbal feedback for students to understand where they are, I think will, because the effort grade is a separate grade from the, I think is the other grade. And making sure that those, you know, reassessment opportunities are there, approved basis, they can take that feedback and go from there.
And we, we should make, because just realistically, because it's going to be new as we go forward with this, we're going to have examples where a kid teacher maybe didn't give that feedback in time or get, and so the, the kid's, grade's going to suffer. There needs to be a way for the parent to escalate. There needs to be a way for the, for us to engage in a way so that the, the, we are giving the kid the feedback that they need, the student has the feedback that they need, and they do have that opportunity to be reassessed. I, I think that would go a long way to assuage some of the concerns of the parents away.
I understand what you're saying. The student's grade is higher because they're getting good effort grades, but they don't eliminate the effort, then their grade would suffer.
Because that's what I'm saying, the effort grade doesn't figure into this.
Not just that, but extra credit now, which is an opportunity, summative group grades, which are an opportunity. Just there, there is, the concern that I'm trying to reflect from the parents is when we take away these additional data points and we, we are effectively emphasizing more on test scores and, and I guess we call it summative. And we have removed the opportunity to, if, if I have not done as well on one particular test or summative, and I have taken away the opportunities to get some of that improved, how do I end up allowing the child a chance, exactly what Jana said, to be reassessed, to get that feedback as soon as possible? And I know that's the objective.
And then also on the one that she said originally is the elimination of zeros in the other. That's is giant there, yes, for students. That's where it really comes into effect, like, oh, I got a zero in the second month.
Well, I need extra credit.
I need extra credit to do it. Right. It's literally written in the program that you can reassess. We would encourage teachers, hey, you know, mom's got a four on his math test.
Yep.
Retake that, work on it. We would encourage that kind of credit, but not the, mom spoke a lot in math class. He'll be given the four, we'll be accurate.
Look, if you are not having the grade that you want, here's where you go. Start with this, if you're not getting a response, then you escalate to these, these avenues.
Precisely, right? In, in the recognition that this is not going to be hiccup free, how do we ensure that the weight of that does not fall on the students? That is what I'm trying to.
I for the, the effort scores, just for the folks that are listening. While effort scores will be eliminated as a grade, effort feedback will not be. So there will be, will that, will, will we set a standard as to how effort or participation is given to students? Or what, could that be, look and feel different teacher to teacher or school to school?
We're still working on that piece. We really want to focus in on our IB learner profile as the kind of overall piece of what will frame that feedback. That's, we're in IB district, we really embrace those criteria in the IB learner profile. But then each school also has their PBIS rubrics that they have in each classroom. So whatever their acronym is, that, you know, kind or, you know, and the student is not demonstrating kindness to other students, that's going to be reported to the parent, like, hey, here's our PBIS acronym, we expect students to be kind. This X student wasn't doing that, here's the example, here's what we're going to do to try to help.
Measures of excellence or success or giftedness that require effort. So if it's getting into accelerated math or if it's, I don't know if it's getting into links or some of those things that require some measures of effort. If that is, if that is the case, how will we rework that? If it requires teacher recommendation or if it requires a measure of effort?
Those kind of programs that students qualify for?
Got it, yes. Would we just eliminate that altogether?
Those programs through our universal screener. So when we do a universal screener, we see these students have qualified, met like certain criteria for gifted. Then we'll scoop them in and have them do the additional assessments to qualify for that program. Part of it is actual rating scales that teachers complete for the students. So if the student has a qualifying score, okay, let's do the rest of the evaluation for these students or parents can request a gifted assessment at any time. And then for the amplified program, we look at those, you know, the students of the demographics that aren't being represented equally, and we say, okay, we're going to pull in these additional students to serve, be served in this program.
Is accelerated math the same way or does that require, does that require a certain effort, consistent effort? When you get to the sixth, when you get to the sixth grade level?
I don't know, Kristi, do you?
I think I'm working on different criteria for, creating a more consistent criteria for accelerated math across the grade levels. So I will look at it, I, I'm pretty sure effort was not, is not included in what we currently use. However, obviously, if it is, that will be eliminated and there will be. It's a motivation for, I think you're, or a checklist. It can be great.
So at some point, we'll have to file with the community, especially if we like, so that they know exactly with those more subjective measures like motivation checklist, effort, if they exist, if they're exactly what those look like now.
Yeah, so for gifted and amplified, that's not changed. Effort scores did not be used, those are, those are measures that the state says. And so they say we can use grades for motivation or we can use checklist, like they have standard measures that we have.
Either or.
Yeah, effort grades are not one of those things. For our own internal accelerated math program, that's what I, I don't know if that was in the past used. I don't think it currently is, but I will definitely verify that and obviously we would have to adopt that if that is.
Price got into the accelerated math, and I don't believe effort grade was a part of, I mean, thank God, because I love that boy, but accelerated, or effort would not. Yeah, I don't, I don't think that was a part of it.
One of my kids is, but I don't. I know that it's hard, sometimes it's hard to see the part where some folks, some of the feedback we've heard, motivation, effort. Going to revamp them, then I think we need to just be clear with folks what we're revamping and what we're not. Because it's all, it's all subjective, it's all, as opposed to a grade, a math test, I got 50% of the problems correct or I got 75% of the problems correct. That's, I think we just have to be clear about what's getting, getting dropped and what's not, you know what I mean? Especially when it comes to those gifted programs that ultimately kids get screened for qualified 400%. They have to go through another process.
So then moving into the investment phase, really developing professional learning opportunities and the training that's going out. So we've got, talking about that consistency to make sure everyone has the information they need. So we took time at superintendent staff meeting and our admin council meeting to train the leaders and make sure they have what they need. So they are working with teams at their schools to flush out all the final details for their training. They've got a template, they've got a checklist to go through and some items to complete. And they're also really pulling in their teachers to figure out the, a lot of details that really teachers know the most and will be able to give the most detail on what's going to work best for some of these protocols. And then during post-planning, the principals and their leadership teams will be develop, leading professional learning. And then teachers will also have a significant amount of time during post-planning to really get with their curriculum teams and develop and make any adjustments to their first unit and their first assessment to make sure that it is packaged up and ready to go the first, when students return in July. And then also it's finalizing and developing the tweaks for the new grade books to make sure we have what we need to launch that. It is going to be a different tool for people to use, so it may take a little bit of time for, you know, teachers to get comfortable with it and put their grades in and be, you know, ready to report that out. So we'll communicate more about just giving a little grace period to our teachers as we come back so that they have time to really learn that tool, be comfortable posting their grades in a, in a manner that is what we're going to be expecting.
You know, we had talked to people on the school calendar, there's, there's going to be changes to the school calendar. No, so in terms of, I was thinking about teacher planning days and things like that. I know we talked about different scenarios. That's because I was just thinking about teachers having time to learn and process. So what is that looking like in the next school year?
Yeah, great question. So calendar, so the next year's calendar is set. We're not changing that one, but we are looking at some options for 23, 24, and 24, 25. So we sent out the parent survey, we sent out the staff survey. So now what we're doing is combing through all that information. And as I'm looking at what the parent feedback was, what the staff feedback was, I'm actually going to develop another option for people to consider. I really feel strongly that our teachers need more time for planning. Dr. Beam today, and Fulton County does eight asynchronous learning days. And that's when they're embedding some of the training for their teachers on the letters training and getting their people really invested in some of that enhanced learning opportunities. When we have kids in the building, right, we need 180 days of instruction. But if we can carve out even a couple hours here and there for teachers to have unfettered time to really just lean in and plan and become masters of that curriculum or have opportunities to work together as a team, I think will see benefits beyond what we could even imagine given them that time. So yeah, we're working on it.
I was confused about that. I remember talking about alternative schedules and stuff.
So implementation, the things that we will see in the fall. And what I've kind of put up here is consistent alignment with practices. Making sure that what we said we were going to do, we are doing in a consistent and pervasive way through monitoring our new grade book, looking at the formative assessments, the common assessments, looking at monitoring student mastery of standards over time, transitioning from. The professional learning communities that our teachers will have. And Hans, that kind of touches on too, like when the teachers will meet in these professional learning communities, are looking at the student data and saying, hey, look, we're seeing this kind of data. How are we going to reassess and reteach the standard so that our kids develop that level of mastery that we know they can achieve? And then the accountability with that is submission of their minutes to the principal, and then the principals will be sending those through their monthly data report. And then to circle back, we are still going to really dig in and lean into next year, looking at the grading scale. Digging deeper into that, do we need to change it, do we not need to change it? You know, are we using these with fidelity? If we're not using these with fidelity, what is, you know, what, what would, what are the barriers in the way to not using these with fidelity so that we can make sure those barriers are removed? So that if it is the best, you know, grading scale we want to use, what do we need to get out of the way so that that can be used in a consistent and pervasive way?
Before we jump off grading scale, so I just, I also want to reflect some of the concerns that we hear from parents around the grading scale. And I think that's kind of the biggest concern is if you move from a higher number of gradients to a lower one and you're converting, that you are not in any way converting down the grades that the kids would have gotten and in any way risking a chance to any other sort of, and so we've seen emails that have come in and asked for, like, let's actually run trials on actual data to make sure that where that's not have, I mean, can we make a commitment or, or say that we're going to do that before we make any of those changes so that we truly know and we have a, a very clear sense of what the impact will be for students before we would make any recommendation?
Hoping Pell, jumping the four point. Working the admissions office, eight or one through seven was very confusing. If you have a 99 or a 91, that's a four. And then, so the part that I am most interested in is like feedback that, is the current scale and how it's transitioned and reported to the college board. If, no matter what scale we use, the college board makes us go zero through one hundred and fifty and turn it in, and then the college board, I'm sorry, the Georgia Hope and Zell Miller people.
All do four-point scale as well.
Then we'll take it and put it back into a four-point scale to determine whether a kid is scholarship eligible. For that part, I'm just, it's very confusing.
But it is.
Are there, are there permutations or are there breakdowns? Like you see on a, on a four-point scale within that or could that be? Like, I think, I think that's what I'm hearing a lot of. More the, the parents of the high schoolers. I don't think I've gotten nearly as much feedback from the younger kids. At, you know. At what point does this wish, if I have a tenth grader or if I have, you know, a rising senior, is this going to impact my rising senior? And then how do you know what's a high three or a low three? How do you, is, is, I mean, is it, is, is that, is that, is that relevant? Is, is that, is, you know, a three, is it a 3.7 or is there a 3.2? Is, is, is any of that relevant, like you see for the college order, for the admission score? Is, is that relevant at all? I think is what they're, is that, that's what I think some folks are wondering.
So Hope and Zell are just your core classes nine through 12. If you, your grade is 80 to 89, it's 3.9, does not matter. Does not matter. That's on their website. That's how they communicated to colleges.
That was kind of probably one of the questions I've brought in. Do you have to address those and stuff?
Yeah, so basically, yes, we're not, since we're not changing the grading scale, it's really those will be questions that we can look at as we go through this investigative stage. So I don't, I don't know. My answer would be no, I really hope not. We definitely wouldn't transition our grading scale to something that could damage a student's opportunity for a scholarship or higher GPA. But we still have to make sure that we're using a grading scale that is accurately reflecting the student's mastery of the standards and how they're performing in class. And I was going to pull up the grading, what's the name of the AR with the, have a scale translate?
Be clear, we have an absolute obligation to answer that question.
Right, oh yeah.
That students are qualifying for the Hope Scholarship and able to afford stuff. So I think it's very valuable in the original presentation.
So this is the current, oh, that's really. So this is our current grading scale. So if a student earns a one or two, they get an F. Four point scale, which is a one. If they get a three, am I explaining this right, Kristy?
I'm sorry, what, what? So scroll down even further.
Oh, okay.
Scroll down there. Okay, so this actually is more reflective of, we use this on when students transition in. But as James was just saying, so our students in, currently in high school get a grade in managed back, which is a one through seven grade. But that grade has to be translated into a grade on a hundred point scale to be reported to the state of Georgia. And then what, what we report to parents on our trans, or, or don't report to parents, but report on our transcripts are the letter grades. But then what colleges actually use are a 4.0. So all of those things, so you can see up to a, so a 70 to a 79. So anything that's a three, it currently is, was, so this doesn't, that's why it's very confusing. So anything a hundred, let's see, what would that be, James? A six and a seven are a four. Yeah. And so a four and a five are a 3.0. A three is a 2.0 and anything below that is a 1.0. And that's for any kind of scholarships. And if you read UGA's admission requirements, they say they strip all of our stuff away and do the same thing. Because, you know, some, some schools do narrative grades, some do hundred point scales, some do four, some do seven. Everybody does something different. So colleges have to go to a more standardized way of looking at that. So, you know, the goal and objective is to give students a, the clearest measure of what their true performance is. I mean, the point of grades is to report learning. So, you know, the clearer we can make it, the better we can reflect the learning that's happening in the classroom, the better off we are providing a service to our students and families, so.
I think a couple, oh, go ahead, James, sorry.
So I see like pluses on here.
Yeah.
So.
Yes, yeah, so those are not in management. So again, what's reported in managed back is the one to seven. But then what gets reported on the transcript, if a student were to pull their transcript, like when they're going to college, they would see those pluses. And I think on the report card as well, right? At the end of the, yeah. So yes, the pluses and the minuses. So I, my understanding is at this point, there's no changes to the grading scale. Will be it. Now, I would strongly, I, I, my strong, strong, strong recommendation is over there. And I believe the high school may have already addressed this, but you see where it's a 97 to 100? That should not be an option. It should be a number. So there should not be a range that it can be. It should be.
In my understanding that it is. So if a student gets a seven, it's a 100. But if it's an EOC course, that they have to pull in the EOC grade, that impacts the grade by 20%.
Correct.
So that could technically pull their grade down to something below a 100. So that's why they've got the bands there.
Right. And we did, and the reason I'm looking, I'm like, what does it say now? Because we did revamp our transcripts in the middle of this year. So they were actually redesigned. So that's why I'm saying like, what is on the transcript right now? But I think the letter grade is actually what appears on our transcripts and our report cards at this point, maybe at the end of the year.
We would have to be using pluses and minuses or this doesn't make mathematical sense. I mean, like if, I mean, we would have to be using pluses and minuses. Otherwise, a six and a seven would both be As, like a 90 to 100 would be.
But they are.
But that's what the college board and college applications.
Right, but I guess for that, that's where I think parents are getting confused. So like, we're telling them, we're telling them that we're not using pluses and minuses, but then they pull a transcript and it says that and.
We use pluses and, I mean, we show this, but what we're saying is that it has no meaning. A six and a seven is the same thing.
But I'll clarify, I didn't realize that we, I missed, I kind of didn't, the A plus and B plus.
Yeah.
And then there's two F's. So why do we have two F's instead of a plus?
Right, right. And one C or a D, why don't we have?
Maybe this is.
That was the whole point of trying to clarify that grade.
When we talk about the grade for a particular class, you're, you're very clear, it's one of the. But when you talk about the blended grade for a transcript, it does get much more finite. And that, I think, is what there's a concern, like if you're at the upper end on a number of them, and that would get you into a scholarship range on your blended GPA. But we grade down because we stripped that precision out. They want to make sure that that doesn't lessen my blended GPA to below the threshold for a, a scholarship. And so rather than, I think, talk about it sort of esoterically right now, I think that what, what is going to be helpful for parents is to have them see, here are examples and here, we, one, we're committing to the fact that no child is going to end up being graded down into a way that's going to take them out of contention. If they would have contended under the previous system, they are not going to be taken out of contention in the new system. We just need to be clear about that to parents. And then we need to show some examples on how that is, that mathematically would not be the case. Right? And I, I think that will, that will help.
And I think that what some parents are, are feeling like, and I can attest to this in my own home, is that when you, in something like math, where either it's right or it's wrong, if you've gotten a hundred and you've gotten a 90 and you get the same grade, do you really understand the same concept? Or if you've gotten an 89 or an 80, there's a range there. So do you really understand the same, have you really taken home the same amount of knowledge? And if you have, then okay. But kind of like where you've got two F's there, a one and a two, do you really understand the same? I think that's where some parents are getting confused. Do they need to, does, does the student need to go back and push to go from a six to a seven? Because really they're the same or are they different? And I think that's where some of the confusion is.
Well, and the biggest, and the reason there's so much confusion is because what do the grades mean? And that's where it, it doesn't matter what your scale is, what is the grade relaying? And so it's the learning that it should be relating. So we need to clarify exactly what is being taught. And that's, grades just report that out. And so, you know, once we clarify what is being taught and what is being assessed and how it's being assessed, then it'll make a little bit more sense regardless of the, the scale. But yeah, the, the clearer the scale is, the easier it is to understand and interpret.
And, and, and again, not to beat a dead horse, but just that, so every parent understands that it is not going to be punitive to any opportunities for the child, no matter what switch we make. And we will be able to demonstrate that. I did want to go back just really quickly. We do actually include effort grades as an option on accelerated math. It's one of the criteria that we can use. I'm looking at the accelerated math here. I think it's one, three of the four criteria and one of the criteria is an option for an accelerated or for a effort score. So presumably that's coming on.
Okay. That is, those are the updates.
On the board? Um, I just, for any modification that's made to the grading scale, if you left it like it was, which we could do that. We could leave it just like it is, where it's one to four for the littler kids and then one to seven to the upper kids. What, what would be the option for, or what has been the option in the past for kids who are in dual enrollment? So if they're at like eight, or maybe they use like a one to 100 scale, or if they come from other states, or they come from DeKalb County? Because I understand, I, I, I guess in DeKalb County or Plank County, other parts of the country, they use a one to 100 scale. So do we do the same kind of conversion? Or a back conversion?
Yeah, this scale here, so a number on a transcript, when it comes into us, we translate any grades from that to our one to seven. Incoming grades from a university.
Or business career tech.
Yes.
College.
So we translate it based on that. Same formula we use to translate things out to a one to one hundred.
That's, I'm just carving there, because if you're taking an accelerated class at Georgia State or Georgia Tech, they're giving you a one, two, three, or four on the transcript. But I am interested in how that gets back into ours and put back out, does it?
Do they not get a numeric grade?
Not on a transcript that you send from a university. Like people either get a 4.0 or a 3.7 cumulatively. But imagine that the Georgia Tech transcripts would just say, or Georgia State or whatever, would just say a 4.0, I don't know.
Are the universities just in? Like you said, an A for four. Sorry, not a D, a F. It depends on which university.
Is that what other counties are doing? I mean, I graduated from a DeKalb County school and that's the way it was. 69 and below was an F, 70 to 79, so on and so on and so on and so on. And then on your transcript, it was a whole bunch of letters.
Yes.
Which translated into a GPA. So is that what other counties are doing?
Most of the, most other districts in the metro area, I would think, well, everyone that I've looked at is using a one to 100 scale.
So are we kind of unique in our struggle with this?
What would be interesting is really benchmark some of that. Who else does a one to seven? How many other people do a one to four? Does everyone else do a zero to 100? And if we, if we pick a different way than a one to seven, what benchmarks have we looked at to determine? So, so it doesn't sound like we're just sort of shooting into the dark. We actually.
Right, correct. And as I was going through this work, you know, looking at some, you know, rubrics that teachers are using, they're actually taking a percentage grade and converting it to a one to seven. So they can get, oh, if they get, if they scored this on their assessment, then they get a seven. But that is number right out of number, you know, number right out of total number. And they're converting a percentage to a seven to put in the grade book. So the question I have going forward as we look into this more is why would we convert it from a one to 100 to a one to seven to convert it back to a one to four?
I mean, you have.
You were like, yeah, that's what we do.
Yep.
That's one of my questions. If, you know, if we want to use a one to seven, that is about proficiency based achievement, not percentage right or wrong.
And I think that that's one of the interesting challenges here is that the grading scale has such different meaning for the littler kids than it does for the bigger kids. I think a lot of the focus here has been on the high school, it's necessarily so. But, you know, I think a second grader is not very focused on a GPA or, you know, kind of a weighted scale. They just, and truth be told, they may not even be very focused on a percentage correct. They just may be focused on how much did I learn and then how can I use that too? Did I grow? Yeah. And the parents are maybe more focused on what the grade looks like. But it just, it, it changes, grades change in their meaning as you, as you grow on. And that kind of begs the question of, is it worth it to change the grading scale? Is, does it, does the one to four fit for the littler kids? And then is the more feedback fits for the older kids? I don't know. I'm not saying I agree or disagree.
And that's what I find typically is that schools do a one to four, they do it elementary. I have not found a lot of, just from my research, a lot of districts, sometimes they make the switch at like seventh or eighth grade, starting to move to the one to one hundred scale. But I can't find a lot of districts that use, I haven't found them. Kristy sent me some lots in Connecticut and I think there are a lot more in the high schools. Yeah, there, it's getting more frequent, but it's not a lot out there right now. The typical grading scale at a high school, middle school is the one to one hundred.
I would, I don't want to speak for parents, but I, I do feel like the concern is reducing delineations more so than increasing. I think that there would, like, perhaps there'd be more support for increasing to a one, zero to 100 than there would be to go down to a one to four. But I, the way that I've read a lot of the feedback that we've gotten, it really is around, let's make sure we're not inadvertently lessening a GPA.
My goal is, I just want to make, I want to make sure grading isn't for to convert and go through all these changes. It should be very clear, it should be easy to understand, and it shouldn't be a lot of work on the teachers to calculate all these different grades. To make sure they have as easy a time as possible to come up with grades for their students so that they can focus on what is the feedback look for the student? What am I going to tell, you know, my, the student, little Sam in my class of here, here's what he needs to do to, to move forward? Like you were talking about, Ms.
There was, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, there was an equity concern about the zero to 100? Was there, was there some concern about that or some?
Can you share anything you remember about that? I know you guys really dealt and dug into that one.
Right, I mean, so the grading, there's a lot of equity concerns with the zero to 100. There are ways to, you know, work through those, but we, we did a book study, it's called Grading for Equity. And a lot of the, because a lot of the things with Z roads, getting Z roads or things like that, when you have. Also, you have 60 ways to fail and only 40 ways, you know, to succeed. So there's a lot of inequitable practices that can go along with the one to 100 scale. Now, you can remediate those again with, with good practice, you know? So it's not doomed, but it's not considered a practice in the world of education. But, you know, the one thing that I kept reminding the team about while we were working throughout this year was the one important piece about the one to 100 scale is that it is what is required by the Georgia Department of Education. So it does eliminate the need for this convergence. Just by the way, verify that, it, it, they don't use the 97 to 100. That is only now for students that transfer in to us. So it is the upper scale. So what students see the report card is the one through seven, that's all that they see on the report card. In Infinite Campus, it is converted to the 100 point scale for the DOE that you can see the upper scale of that part we were looking at. And then the pluses and minuses of the letter grades that appear on the transcript.
I, I do think it would be interesting for us to just see, you know, of the 800 school systems or whatever that are comparable to us. How many use what type?
We did pull that, that was one of the tasks that the Equity and Grading Task Force did.
We have it, I would love to see it if that could be, yep, yep.
That information. If you had a one to four grading scale for the older kids, what would you consider failing? Just a one or? Like at what point would you say this child needs remediation?
On a one to four?
Yeah. And then a two would be considered passing, but developing, but passing.
Three would be proficient or would be pushed or? So conversations to still be had. I've written a lot of notes here to make sure that we put some of those things, questions out there and testing things to make sure as we look at going forward. Go thought out and good process going forward.
Any other questions? All right, so this work session is adjourned at 7:09.